Good.
No.
Right, you're going to. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our November third council meeting. Our first order of business is a call to order and rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, what is in hand, the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the reading of our sunshine statement and roll call by Mrs. Lauren Stats, our municipal clerk.
This meeting of the Denellen Borough Council is called pursuant to the provisions of the open public meetings law. This meeting of November third, two thousand and twenty five was included in a list of meetings that was advertised in the Courier on January ninth, two thousand and twenty five, and as a teleconference was noticed on the official Denellen website on October thirty first, two thousand and twenty five, on the public bulletin board on North Avenue on October thirty first, two thousand and twenty five, and has remained continuously posted as the required notice. Mayor Solento?
President.
Council President Sigmund?
Here.
Mrs. Albertson?
Here.
Mrs. Lance?
Here.
Mrs. Rios?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Here.
And I would like to welcome our newest council person, Councilwoman Elizabeth Vandermark, who is joining us here for her first in-person meeting. And as we honor your late husband, Councilman Hal Vandermark, we thank you for stepping into the role. We wish you all the best and God bless you and your family. So thank you for stepping up to the plate. Next on the agenda is item number three, proclamations. We have three this evening. First one up is recognizing November as National Diabetes Awareness Month, and I believe Councilwoman Lance will be reading that proclamation.
It will. Okay. National, whereas National Diabetes Awareness Month is observed annually throughout the month of November to raise awareness about the prevalence, risks and management of diabetes. And whereas diabetes affects thirty eight point four million people, eleven point six percent of the population in the United States, and is a serious disease for which there is no known cure, and is the eighth leading cause of death by disease in the United States. And whereas one in five people do not know they have the disease. And whereas both people with diagnosed and undiagnosed diabetes may experience adverse outcomes, including heart problems, kidney disease, severe nerve pain, neuropathy and blindness. And whereas approximately ninety eight million American adults have pre-diabetes, a condition which puts them at a greater risk for developing type two diabetes. And if current trends continue, one in three American adults will have diabetes by two thousand and fifty. And whereas type one diabetes, T one D, is an autoimmune, autoimmune disease in which the body's immune system destroys the insulin-producing cells in the pancreas, leaving individuals unable to produce insulin, a hormone essential for converting food into energy. Its exact cause remains unclear, with no currently known way to prevent or cure T one D. And those affected must monitor their blood sugar and administer insulin daily to survive. And whereas diabetes has many faces, affecting everyone, young and old alike, Caucasians, African Americans, Latinos, Native Americans, Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, with many undeserved populations, underserved populations in the United States having an increased risk for developing type two diabetes. And whereas an increase in community awareness of risk factors and symptoms related to diabetes can improve the likelihood that people with diabetes will get the care they need before suffering the devastating complications of the disease. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Jason F. Solento, mayor of the Borough of Denellen, do hereby proclaim the month of November two thousand and twenty five to be Diabetes Awareness Month in the Borough of Denellen and encourage all residents to learn about the signs and risk factors of diabetes, support awareness efforts and take proactive steps towards early detection.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Next up is an acknowledgement recognizing November as Native American Heritage Month, and Council President Sigmund has offered to read that.
Acknowledgement recognizing November as Native American Heritage Month. The land upon which the Borough of Denellen stands is part of the traditional territory of the Leni Lenape called Lenape Huking. The Leni Lenape people lived in harmony with one another upon this territory for thousands of years. During the colonial era and early federal period, many were removed west and north, but some also remain among the three continuing historical tribal communities of the region. The Nanticoke Leni Lenape Tribal Nation, the Ramapo Lenape Nation, and the Poetan Lenape Nation. We acknowledge the Leni Lenape as the original people of the land in this region, and we acknowledge their continuing relationship with this territory. In our acknowledgement of the continued presence of Lenape people in this region, we affirm the aspiration of the great Lenape chief Tomonend that there may be harmony between the indigenous people of this land and the descendants of the immigrants to this land as long as the rivers and creeks flow and the sun, moon and stars shine.
Okay, thank you, Council President. Next up is a proclamation honoring the quick actions and response of Vinnie Demura during a fire on September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five. And we have Vinnie and his family here. So Vinnie, if you'd like to come on up, we have a proclamation for you. Join Chief? Over to your firing. So, so move this over. So. Well, first we have to look at. Okay. A proclamation honoring the quick action and response of Vinnie Demura during the fire on September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five. Whereas on the evening of September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five, the Denellen Fire Department was dispatched to the three hundred block of First Street for a reported structured fire at approximately seven twenty P M. And whereas it was reported that the rear porch inside of the house were actively burning, presenting a serious risk of the fire spreading further. And whereas Vinnie Demura, a vigilant resident of Lincoln Avenue, immediately noticed the fire, called nine one one to report the incident, and took swift action by using his garden hose to suppress the flame till the fire department erupted. And whereas thanks to his quick thinking and decisive action, Mr. Demura was able to prevent what could have been a significant fire loss to property and a potential danger to residents and first responders. And whereas Mr. Demura showed remarkable courage and selflessness to aid a neighbor in need. Therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Jason F. Solento, along with the Denellen Borough Council and the entire Borough of Denellen, recognize and extend our deepest gratitude to Vinnie Demura for his bravery and swift action in preventing a serious fire accident dated this third of November, two thousand and twenty five, under my signature. Thank you for your service, Vinnie, and your quick action. Thanks. Bob, you got enough photos?
I've got plenty more.
I made a point for her, so. Well, no, thank you so much. Vinnie and I actually grew up together. You're really good, right? Okay, so good family. We all go down the salon, but Vinnie, the fire department is looking for volunteers.
Sign up.
Maybe Laura got tried to, uh, to fire school, so.
And Billy put out my fire. I'm a teenager.
There you go.
Wow.
Stay at my house.
Chief, I don't know if you want to say a few words. They're not up to you. Fire department to your crew and the captain more. Lieutenant. Deputy Chief.
Yeah.
I just want to say, Vinnie, thank you for everything you did that night. It was interesting when I came around the corner and there you were standing with the garden hose. But definitely without a doubt, you kept that house from burning down. Deputy Chief, anything? Okay, you're good. Okey doke. Item number four on the agenda is the approval meeting minutes of our regular meeting, October twentieth, and our special meeting, October twenty ninth. Can I have a motion in second for the meeting minutes on October twentieth?
Move it. Second, Sigmund.
Albertson, Sigmund, any comments, additions or redactions as the meeting minutes currently stand? Without hearing any roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Can I have a motion in second on our meeting minutes of, actually, Councilwoman Vandermark, you would just abstain on that?
That's fair.
Pointed at that time. Um, item number two, uh, item two is can I have a motion in second on the meeting minutes for our special meeting, October twenty ninth?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Any comments, additions or redactions to the meeting minutes of October twenty ninth as they currently stand? Without hearing any, we can have a roll call, and Councilwoman Vandermark, you can vote on this. You were part of.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Item number five is resolutions. We have resolutions three seventy two through three seventy eight. Going to ask that Mrs. Stats, our municipal clerk, read through them and then give us the opportunity to discuss them if we so choose.
Resolution number three seventy two is to pay the bills.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Resolution number three seventy three is to appoint fire department members.
Move it, Albertson.
Second, Sigmund.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Abstain.
Mr. Scott?
Abstain position of the fire department.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr., sorry, Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Sorry.
Uh, just want to say thank you to Mr. Herkert and Mr. Hess for stepping up to the plate and becoming a part of our fire department. They're also full-time employees, so it'll be good to have individuals who can show up to a fire during the day when we sometimes lack volunteers during the day. So thank them for stepping up.
Resolution number three seventy four is authorizing a request to extend NJ DOT two thousand and twenty four Transit Village Bound Brook Road beautification improvement.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Resolution number three seventy five is authorizing the cancellation of taxes for a hundred percent disabled veteran pertaining to one thirteen through one fifteen Prospect Avenue.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Can I ask a question pertaining to, is this a multifamily?
She stated it was a new purchase of one thirteen to one fifteen Prospect Ave, a two-family residence. Don Gutshell granted a hundred percent exemption for half of the property.
It's for only one half?
Yes.
Okay, just thank you for the clarification.
Right, I'll take a roll, Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Resolution number three seventy six is to authorize a refund for an unexpended balance in Escrow to three seventy to three seventy two North Avenue.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Resolution number three seventy seven is for the transfer of appropriations for the two thousand and twenty five operating accounts.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Resolution number three seventy eight is approving the cost of the abatement of the property code violations at two oh three South Washington Avenue and placement of a lien against said property for the costs and expenses thereof in accordance with chapter two seventeen, property maintenance of the Code of the Borough of Denellen.
Move it, Rios?
Second, Scott.
Mr. Robertson, would you like to explain this briefly to the public?
Yes, this is a property where there was a property code maintenance violation. It was unintended for many, many months. The property mayor may be in foreclosure, I believe. The, uh, the borough reached out to the owner, notified trustee that was handling the property, and no action was taken. The council previously authorized the Public Works Department to do the work to bring it into compliance by cutting the grass and doing other maintenance work. The borough followed all of the procedures in the property maintenance code, issued the notices as required, retained, obtained authorization from the council to do the work. The work has now been completed. The cost is six hundred fifty dollars. This, uh, this resolution certifies the cost, notifies the tax collector to place this as a lien against the property. So if and when the property is sold or the tax is paid, that money will be repaid to the borough.
Thank you. And so just so we're on to where our council, remember if we're not here at the time, and we've amended our property maintenance ordinance to be stronger as well as implementing a vacant properties ordinance, and this is part of those efforts to help maintain our neighborhoods. As someone once said, where they think this is an HOA, yes, I think Denellen is one large HOA, and you pay taxes into it. So you deserve your neighbors' property values to be maintained just like yours. So this is our efforts. So you're aware, there's a legal process for do this. To do this, it's in two seventeen of our property maintenance of our code book. Anybody can pull that out at the clerk's office. And this is just part of the process of making our neighborhoods clean and sit, and we're following the law. So. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Council, any questions or discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Okay, item number, um, six on the agenda is council reports. Councilwoman Albertson, Councilwoman Vandermark.
Nothing to report as of now.
Okay, thank you. Looking forward to future reports. Councilwoman Rios?
Yes.
Get used to that in order now.
Denellen Public Library, please visit our Facebook and website page for the latest news and upcoming events. Thank you to everyone who joined us for our amazing Halloween party. It was a great way to kick off the holiday season with spooky music, sweet treats and lots of fun. Board of Ed, the next Board of Ed meeting will be held on November eighteenth at seven P M. Important upcoming dates for the Denellen School District. November sixth and seventh, school will be closed for an NJ EA convention. November eleventh and twelfth, Faber-only parent-teacher conferences. November twenty sixth is half a day of school, all schools, and the twenty seventh and twenty eighth school is closed for Thanksgiving holiday. Buildings and grounds, all irrigation systems and water lines for the parks and snack shack are scheduled to be shut off for the season by Public Works. Following Veterans Day, the DPW will remove the hometown hero banners and flags from downtown decorative poles. The DPW crew has replenished the dog waste bag stations in all parks. Yay! Parsa reports. Parsa continues to assist with sewer-related calls while the jet-back truck remains out of service due to a transmission issue. That's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Albertson?
The fire department responded to thirty nine calls for service in October. Total calls for two thousand and twenty five are four hundred twenty four. October incidents, fire, there were three, rescue, two, hazardous condition, fourteen, service call, one, good intent, seven, false alarm, twelve. In addition to emergency responses, the fire department attended several trainings and held several drills during September, October, sorry. On October second, they had a cleanup drill. October third, they had their fire, fire department open house. On October tenth, they went to Faber School and A plus Academy for fire safety visit. On October eleventh, they did some dorm prep to prepare the boat and high-water truck. On October tenth and eleventh, they did the haunted trail standby. October thirteenth was monthly officers' meeting and department work drill. October nineteenth was the live burn training drill. October twenty sixth was the Halloween parade and Founder's Day. And October twenty ninth was the monthly fire department meeting. They're happy to see a number of residents continue to join the department over the past few months. The fire department is still looking for new members to join the department. Membership is open to anyone sixteen to eighteen as a junior member, and full member is open to anyone over eighteen. Visit their website, W W W dot Denellen F D dot com, or email joined F D F D at Denellen F D dot com for more information. The Friends of Denellen Public Library is having their annual membership meeting November thirteenth at six thirty P M in the library. Bags and bling sale is on November twenty second. Sip and shop is, uh, on November twenty second, the first for people to shop and enjoying mocktails and cheese and crackers. And on Sunday, the twenty third, uh, you can, anyone can come between eleven and three. This year, we will be at the Denellen Senior Center, and this is a great place to start doing your holiday shopping, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Lance?
Yes, for recreation, as the fall soccer season draws to a close, the Recreation Department wishes to extend its gratitude to all the volunteer coaches. Their dedication is essential for the success and growth of the soccer program. This season, they welcomed over one hundred fifty players and had twenty four volunteer coaches with many coaching multiple teams across different age groups. Recreation youth basketball registration will open this week. The basketball season is set to start on Saturday, January third, with practices scheduled for Saturdays. We invite children in grades K through six to participate. Volunteer coaches are still needed, so if you're interested in joining as a volunteer coach, please contact Recreation Director Kelly Cedar at kcedar@denellenborough.com. The pickleball program, adult pickleball program, is set to begin later this month. They're currently awaiting confirmation from the school regarding facility usage. And the Veterans Day ceremony, um, is to be held Tuesday, November eleventh. As always, the Recreation Department proudly supports the Denellen American Legion and VFW posts for the Veterans Day ceremony on Tuesday, November eleventh at eleven A M at Washington Memorial Park, and we encourage everyone to come out and honor our remarkable veterans. That's all.
God bless you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Council President Sigmund?
No report today, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. No encouraging volunteering like you normally do?
Well, I mean, I could go on for hours, but I won't. Uh, but I do want to say thank you to the rec volunteers, also the volunteers that, uh, and staff that put together Founder's Day that was, uh, pretty wild this year and fun. Uh, so that's it. See, it was great. Excellent. Ooh, ha. So yes, that is all.
Thank you. Councilman Scott?
For the DPW, they routinely clean the downtown area and all the parks and properties, weekly lawn and landscape maintenance for parks and properties, which include leaf cleanup. They walk the streams to ensure there's no blockages, also check the head walls before and after the last storm. They cleared the catch basin lids throughout the borough before and after the past storm. They continue, uh, leafbag collection, and a reminder, curbside pickup will continue through the end of the year. Patchwork at various locations throughout the borough, and two members assisted P S E N G with a tree that fell on Fourth Street, and they serviced the police DPW fleets as they came due for maintenance and breakdowns. That's my report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, streetlights, decorative lights have been, uh, completed on North Avenue, and P S E N G estimates that the remaining decorative lights to be installed on North Washington Avenue will be completed by December, so that'll be a nice addition, hopefully right before the Christmas tree light. That'd be nice, because it goes right by Washington Memorial Park. I noted that there was a conversation on Facebook this week regarding, uh, lights in town. And I'll remind everybody, while Facebook's a wonderful way to communicate with your neighbor, it's not the way to conduct official borough business. Coming to council meetings or writing to your mayor, your local legislatures, or coming to Borough Hall and speaking to the administrator or the clerk is the direct and best way. Either way, um, I just do want to make a note that, uh, we have actually been working on what with the concern was. So we're not sitting idly by in on our hands. So just so you have an update of where we're at currently and where we're going, P S E N G has just replaced over forty lights that the Department of Public Works reported as being out throughout the borough and at the train station. The borough continues to work with P S E N G to replace older soft lights with new L E D lights that offer clearer, brighter lighting, longer-lasting bulbs and improved energy efficiency. Alex Miller, our business administrator, has been having ongoing conversations with P S E N G about the possibility of adding more streetlights. P S E N G has advised that after the L E D lights have been installed, we'll have a clearer picture of where additional lighting may be needed because the L E D lights are brighter and they actually light up a larger radius. So there might be areas that we might not necessarily need to add lights where before we might have, because they were the softer, older-looking lights. So we're taking this in steps. Just for those who are listening in or in attendance that have made those comments on Facebook, if you can remind those on Facebook where we're at and what's been going on, it'd be much appreciated. Thank you. Okay, Veterans Day ceremony, uh, Councilwoman Lance already noted, but, uh, please join us on Tuesday, November eleventh. It's a great way to remember and honor our veterans. They deserve it for their courage and sacrifice and, uh, their unwavering commitment to our nation. And actually, Mr. Miller, I have an idea for you, um, that I'll talk to you talk to you outside of council chambers to see if it's something we can do next year. I was at a, a party this weekend up in North Jersey and a town, Rockaway Township, so you can look into it. Actually, I'll just say it. They have veterans that who live in town and through their Boy Scouts and American Legions and VFWs, they coordinate efforts, and the American flag their entire wall around the perimeter, kind of like what you do with the Christmas lights around the bat sandbags. They showed me pictures. I actually thought it was a very nice idea, something to consider. Now, I know the, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, American Legion with Boy Scouts goes to the graveyards on Memorial Day, but this might be a nice way during Veterans Day to just continue our patri- patriotism and our Miracle Mile because we're very proud to be American here. Okay? So just a thought. Uh, Founder's Day, just want to say thank you to everyone who came out to our second annual Founder's Day Festival and the seventy-sixth annual Halloween Parade on Sunday, October twenty-six, as we celebrate our, our borough's one hundred and thirty-eighth birthday. She's a young one. It was a great way to, it was a great day filled with Harvest Fest vendors as well, as well. So thank you to the Denellen Downtown Management Organization for pivoting from the weekend before and helping us get vendors into Founder's Day and making it a joint effort. It was interesting and lively to see the wrestling presented by ISPW Pro Wrestling. I have a few, um, uh, constructive criticism in the sense of we're not a stupid town. I would, maybe that's vocabulary they can take out of their act next year, but anyway. Stilt walkers, a balloon artist, a bounce house and a variety of foods and snacks. Attend attendees also got to look at the borough's history with displays featuring photos of our Miracle Mile throughout the years. The pitch for tomorrow, it's Election Day, November fourth, it's our general election, and the polls will be opened in Denellen from six A M to eight P M. Uh, voting for residents in districts one and two is at the Denellen Senior Center. That's at two sixteen Orange Street. Voting for residents in districts three and six are at the George W. Hodgeok Firehouse. That's at two thirty-one South Washington, uh, South Madison Avenue. And voting for residents in districts four and five is at the Denellen Public Library, one hundred New Market Road. If you're unsure where your voting district is, you can visit the denellen-nj.gov backslash election map. It should also be on your sample ballot as well. For those who are voting by mail, if you requested your ballot, you can return your ballot to the secure mail-in ballot box located at the Denellen Public Library at one hundred New Market Road up until eight P M. Ballots may also be dropped off directly at the Middlesex County Board of Elections Office located twenty-six B Kennedy Boulevard. Ballots may also be dropped off directly at the Middlesex County Board of Elections Office located twenty-six B Kennedy Boulevard, East Brunswick until eight PM or at least postmarked by tomorrow, I believe it is. So be sure to cast your vote so your voice can be heard and encourage your family, friends and neighbors to do the same. Don't forget to thank a poll worker because they ensure we have safe and secure elections. And with Veterans Day next week, just remember, it's important to vote. People died for your right to vote. If you don't like who's on the ballot, just write somebody and just still vote. Okay? And then whatever the outcome is, always remember, we're still all Americans and we're still all neighbors and we should respect one another. So that's my ending piece on that one. Okey doke. Item number seven on the agenda is council discussion. We don't have any this evening. Item number, sorry, that's seven. Number eight on the agenda is department head reports. IT. You're still ITing. Good job. Legal?
I don't report.
Okay. Clerk, registrar? She wants to get home so she can wake up at four AM and handle the elections tomorrow, so. Administrator, DPW? None? Finance? Bills are still paid? Great. Police? Okay, chaplain, anything back there?
Amen. We have four thank yous. And this firehouse came back and we're ready to.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Rescue squad?
Really quickly, a lot of events in October, we are ready to staff, all of them, so October, low cost, on original. We have a member on our station, a lead plant, a member of our pound, plus, uh, we should get, uh, we were being T last spring. So, uh, so it's not standard today to, uh, volunteer, support, uh, the dust, uh, at the don't actually got work, uh, volunteer, you're welcome, PT, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you for your service. Before we get to public comments, I meant to mention in my report, we're going to be issuing within the next several weeks, probably before Thanksgiving, the form for the annual nomination for Volunteer of the Year as well as Lifetime Achievement. So keep a lookout on that and then we'll make a decision in early December before, before we, because we need to get plaques and stuff and proclamations and everything prepared. So just keep a lookout, come out from Billy's office, okay? And then also, it's a time of year again, look for Brianna's email, we're, we're requesting a meeting for the twenty twenty-six, can't believe we're there almost, council committee assignments that I'll appoint on the first of January. So keep an eye out for that as well and start thinking about some committees you would appreciate to be on, like you don't want to be a part of anymore. Okay? And as always, there's going to be so chefs. I do that every year. So everybody gets experience on different committees. Okay, item number nine on the agenda is public comments. We'll open it up to the public. We ask that you please state your name and your residency and we're here to listen to your concerns or compliments. Those are thanks to.
Bay Oregon, eight oh five Combe Street, and I'll, I'll look at these, I mean, if you give me three, Stanford, one left on the corner, one ball closed up, one hall, 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 hall.
Yes, on the corner of Sanford and Bound Brook Road. We're aware that it's been purchased and the individual who has purchased it has not come forward with a finalized concept of anything yet. So, good news, it's been purchased. I think their goal is to do something with the property and not just sit on it. It's just a matter of what they're going to propose. Okay? So just always keep in mind that whatever is zoned for, they're allowed to put there. And so we'll see what they propose to put there. Okay? Any other comments? Yes?
Forty-second Street, also business right in town, twenty-eight. My concern is the motorcycle, almost, and the electric scooters and everything outside of this is very dangerous. Headlines coming about and there's some wanting to, you know, that concern, that's coming up on me. They don't even, we can't even hear it because they're electric.
Yeah.
So I don't know what we would have done.
I think ultimately, it's going to take the state to get involved. I know our legislative representatives, Nancy Munoz and Michelle Mazzacutis are looking to put forward legislation. I know Senate, President Senate Leader Nick Skatara, I think, is looking to put something forward. Basically, they're going to have to regulate it better because I know it's a real nuisance. I don't know what can be done currently on sidewalks. I know they belong in the roads. So that's a police matter that we can speak with them about and how that could be better enforced. I can tell you in our parks, they're not allowed at all, not at all. And we're getting better signage that indicates they're not allowed. I actually say we should just get a billboard personally just so we, you know, really blast it, but, you know. I don't want to be kicked out of office out of that way, but we're going to wind up putting signs all over the place in our parks that are clearly defined that they don't belong there because, well, yes. But we, you know, so we'll work with the police on what is in the statutes for sidewalks, but in our parks, I can tell you, we're going to put better signage that clearly indicates what is allowed and what's not. So we, we went through our signs and what needs to be updated in the park based upon the ordinances we have on book. And we're doing a administrative, we did a review, Parks and Facilities did a review and now it's in the police department to do a review. And once it comes out of that, it'll be presented to mayor and council and we'll move forward. I. If it's a nuisance, look, if it's a nuisance, call the cops and the cops will use the discretion based upon state statute and what's in our ordinance book. Yep. So, the easiest number to remember is nine one one if it levels up to an emergency. If you don't, if you don't believe it, levels up to an emergency, but the police need to be notified, seven three two nine six eight three thousand, extension zero. Okay? The best thing you can do is if ever you have a concern, see something, say something and call the cops. They'll use their discretion. They're trained professionals. They'll know what to do when they get on site. Okay? Yep. Anybody else in the public, please state your name and residency and we're here to listen to your questions, your concerns. Yes? Oh, right over there, sorry. You already went, Mr. Morgan. Can we, so sorry, I should have noted, we do have a microphone up front, so until we get the drop mics. So you got to speak loud.
These are new homeowners and I just want to thank you guys for sending, I'm not home to none my whole life. So I thought it's very charming to get the newsletter talking about what the Miracle Mile is and I really enjoyed learning about your little town. So I'm, I'm new here, but anyway, I just wanted to say it's so nice. I'm happy to be here and I love you guys. Yeah, I really felt to know.
Well, here's the deal. I think it's the people that make this a great town, so bravo to you folks. And it's, it's not our town, like, it's your town now too. So as, as the play, our town, there again. You're welcome and, and welcome. Married into a good family. Okay, any, oh, Mr. Morgan? Yeah, so let me tell you what happens with a lot of the projects that happen. And you can find all our redevelopment projects on denalland nj.gov backslash redevelopment. You can look through all the financial agreements, redevelopment agreements, the concept plans, every little bit and piece you can, we're very transparent with that. We don't hide anything on it, okay? So basically, that is a property that was approved. It's four oh five to four fifteen North Avenue. What happens is, is they get to a certain point and then because we're on a state highway, the NJDOT gets involved. And, or the DEP, but in this case for them, it's the NJDOT. And it's for like ingress, egress onto the property and so they have to review the plans and everything. So they're being reviewed by the NJDOT. Am I correct on that one? So they're not held up on any, believe me, they invested the money up until this point. They want to be building and believe me, we rather see a building than an empty lot. And we'd rather be getting the ratable on that as well too. But the state, as much as they're pushing for us to be building, they also know how to block it as well. So, yeah. You know, always remember that when you go and vote. Any other questions from the public? Anybody online that want to ask questions? Okay, so there's no further business and we have one last resolution, that's three seventy-nine. But before I ask this motion in second, our next council meeting is November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, of course, at seven PM. You can join us in person here or virtually. And so can I have a motion in second on three, three seventy-nine?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Scott.
All in favor? Any nays? Okay, everyone, good night.